Go ahead and kick him now.
Yeah, let's look around on camera.
That's an annual.
Well, I'll let you go with about a year.
You were just right down the street.
I'm about to start. I'm about to start. I'm over it. I told you I had any patience. Did I tell you that? I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Reynoldsburg City Council meeting to order October 11, 2021. The time is now 6:34. I'm Council President Angie Jenkins and would like to welcome everyone to Reynoldsburg City Council chambers. At this time, we will have the invocation. Please stand for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance following the invocation. Please welcome John Stumbo from the Alliance, who will give the invocation.
Almighty God, we come to you in the name of the living Christ. And I simply ask that this city council chamber tonight would be marked by a spirit of wisdom and courage and guidance so that the citizens of the city of Reynoldsburg could continue to live in safety and peace and prosperity. We ask these things because you're good, not because we deserve them, but we're grateful for them. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. At this time, we will have the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Present.
Councilmember Savadi.
Here.
Councilmember Packerell. Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Cottner.
Here.
And Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Excuse me. Madam President.
Yes.
Excuse me, before we move on, may I ask that we have a moment of silence for Mr. Packerell's father, who has passed away and gone to heaven?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands approved as corrected. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. Approval of city council regular meeting minutes for September 27, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Saying none. The amendments stand approved as submitted. Next, we have community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. Citizens may bring matters to the attention of city council or discuss items on the agenda. Before addressing city council, members of the public are asked to complete a speaker's form and give it to the clerk. The city council president will invite speakers to step to the microphone and give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. Are there any comments from the public?
Madam President, I have not received any written requests. However, I do have an email comment.
Thank you.
This comment is from Teresa Coulter. My name is Teresa Coulter. I live at 1223 Rondelay Road East, and I'm writing this letter in opposition to the proposed sheets at the corner of Main Street and Bryce Road. My husband and I moved to Reynoldsburg in June, and while we are new to the city, I am familiar with this community, as my mother and family members have called Reynoldsburg home since the 1950s. I have seen progress and development in Reynoldsburg and the surrounding areas, just as many of you have, and I love to see our city grow. However, I believe allowing the -- I'm sorry. I believe allowing the installment of sheets at the intersection of Main Street and Bryce Road is not the kind of progress we need in Reynoldsburg. In the 1.7-mile stretch along Main Street between I-270 and Ada Drive, there are already six fast-food burger joints, Steak 'n Shake, Rally's, McDonald's, Dairy Queen, Swinson's, and Wendy's, not to mention other fast-food eateries, as well as several dine-in establishments. I find it hard to rationalize the addition of yet another fast-food restaurant in such a short distance. In that same 1.7-mile stretch, there are four gas stations. I fail to see reason in the addition of the fifth. We have all experienced the traffic along Main Street. That is, in part, the nature of a busy state route. The traffic, however, is compounded by the congestion of some of the businesses housed here. The fast-food establishments and gas stations are no exception. The addition of a combination fast-food gas station complex would only further congest Main Street. In addition to traffic concerns, there is the issue of so many fast-food restaurants in close proximity to each other and to our residential areas. Though inconclusive, there have been some studies that indicate proximity to fast-food restaurants is associated with higher body mass index in adults. And a study published by the Official Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics in 2003 concluded that fast-food consumption among children in the United States has an adverse effect on dietary quality and should possibly increase risk of obesity. I urge the council to consider the ramifications bringing yet another fast-food restaurant into our community may have on future generations. My final point in opposition to the installment of a sheets at this intersection is that the installment of two other sheets has been proposed, and to my understanding, at least one has already been approved. If we allow three locations of the same business to come into our community, all within five miles of each other, what businesses are we shutting out? Have there been other proposals for any of the sites of the proposed sheets? I would hate to see Reynoldsburg lose out on other commodities, whether they are restaurant or other types of business, because there is too much of one thing. That is it, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council? Are there any comments from Mayor Begany?
Of course, Madam President. If you'll bear with me, I have a few proclamations that I would like to read, so. First, I would like to invite members that are here this evening from Hart Food Pantry to come down for me, please. So I have a proclamation for Hart Food Pantry, and a few words after that, I will let Ms. Wooten go ahead and speak to her staff and do a couple of introductions, but I'm going to wait till everybody kind of meanders down here. So from the office of the mayor, whereas the Mid-Ohio Market at Hart is helping Eastside and Reynoldsburg thrive, and whereas the mission of Hart is to nourish and flourish, and whereas Hart has grown from serving 225 households a month to over 225 households a day, and whereas Hart has had 32,300 shopping events to date each week, serves 900-plus neighbors, representing approximately 4,000 people weekly, which represents 84,000 meals, and whereas through September of this year, volunteers have collected nearly 250,000 pounds or close to 125 tons of product, and whereas volunteer hours are the equivalent to 13 full-time employees at 27,040 hours served annually, and whereas Hart creates and supports local business, schools, churches, and civic organizations, and as such helps to promote unity and community pride throughout Reynoldsburg, and whereas Hart serves the neighbors that represent 16 languages and actively seeks to learn the cultures of the many who call Reynoldsburg home. Now therefore, I, Joe Begany, Mayor of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, hereby and heartily commend Mid-Ohio Market at Hart on their 10 years of service to the city of Reynoldsburg, here unto sign this day. Thank you on behalf of so many for all that you have all done. Thank you. Going to introduce again Cheryl Wooten, who will speak to her members.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and guests, I really appreciate the proclamation that was just given and the stats, but the stats don't tell it all. And as with any organization, as you're serving the community, you do it out of love and compassion. And one of the things I wanted to recognize today, that I may be accepting this proclamation, but I don't accept it alone. We don't get there alone. It takes hundreds of volunteers and staff members throughout each and every week to serve the community. I'm going to ask if you are on the board, will you raise your hand? And Barth, would you mind standing? If you are a staff member, paid staff member, would you raise your hand? If you are a volunteer, would you raise your hand? We have volunteers, family members, to support what we do. That 13 equivalent of 13 full-time employees for volunteers, week in, week out, extremely hot, extremely cold, there is no in-between around here. We're still trying to find that. But our team is determined that with COVID and with so many things that are going on, that we want to be a part of the community. We want to be able to provide nutrition and services that will help people to flourish as the days go on. And so I just want to thank you. It is not me alone. It's on our behalf. So would you all help me in recognizing this team that I'm going to tear up here for their continual efforts in serving the Reynoldsburg community? Thank you.
Hey, Aaron. Aaron. Aaron.
Next, I would like a Mr. Razal to join me here. As you heard earlier, Councilmember Boone Packerell is not able to join us tonight, but one of the things that he asked is that we have a proclamation recognizing Hindu Heritage Month, and Mr. Razal is going to join me and accept on his behalf. Whereas Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world, with more than 1 billion followers worldwide, 6 million in the United States, and 11,000 in Ohio, and whereas during the month of October, the culture, history, traditions, achievements, and contributions of Hindus are recognized and celebrated throughout the United States. Whereas American Hindus have made numerous positive contributions in all aspects of society, from science to business to politics and spirituality, and whereas Ohio's vibrant American Hindu community has contributed tremendously to the vitality of the state and enriched the lives of its citizens, and whereas Hindus strive to achieve Dharma, which is a code of living that emphasizes good conduct and morality, and whereas during October, the American Hindu community will collectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and the diverse spiritual tradition rooted in India. Now therefore, I, Joe Begany, Mayor of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Hindu Heritage Month, as I urge all people of Reynoldsburg to join in recognition of this significant occasion and the achievements above mentioned. And accepting this award again, Mr. Razal. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Mayor, all the council members and distinguished views. I'm very honored to be here representing Mr. Packerell. So I would like to thank city councils, all the members, and Reynoldsburg City for recognizing us as our Hindu Heritage Month, especially for us, which give us a lot of opportunities in this area to develop, and we believe in peace, prosperity, and progressivity. So once again, I would like to thank all the city councils' members, mires, and all the peoples of Reynoldsburg for giving us a big space, and I'd like to thank once more again. Thank you so much.
But wait, there's more. I do want to bring a couple of things to the attention. We do have an update on some of our property purchases, so I'm going to start off with the property across from the cemetery. We have entered into a letter of intent with Daimler Corporation to purchase five of those acres at $190,000 for a total of $950,000. We are going to continue to work with them on this process moving forward, and we should have news about the other acreage on that land on October 25 at that meeting at that time. We also have some news from the Happy Dragon. We are again hoping to have a purchase agreement in place by October 25 or November 8, with a hopeful site plan submitted for planning either on November 4 or the first meeting in December. And while he is here, I would like to invite John Stumbo momentarily to give a brief update on the project that we all know of as the Alliance project. You notice that there is no longer a Kmart there, and now it is all open, and so I will let Mr. Stumbo kind of update us on that and then close with a few additional comments.
Thank you, Mayor Joe. Appreciate this. City council, thank you for the warm welcome that we received to the city of Reynoldsburg. Our opening months have been everything that we hoped it would be. So thank you for working with us on the demolition day. Thank you for your warm extension of greetings to us in various ways, being on Mayor Joe's Facebook Live, you know, as a highlight. So seriously, we're -- everything's working for us. The plan's working. We're interviewing architects. As of today, we began that part of the process. The fundraising, this is all by personal donations from people who believe in our organization and the mission that we're part of, so that continues. And our staff continues to relocate one at a time as appropriate for their family from Colorado to Ohio. And not everybody's been able to buy a house in Reynoldsburg proper, you know. Other communities are benefiting from our presence as well. But meanwhile, we've hired 18 new staff members from the region, and I'm delighted to announce that one of our goals of broadening the diversity of our staff is already being lived out. Colorado Springs is not the most diverse place in the United States, but our family, the Alliance, is a very diverse organization, and we wanted our staff to better reflect the diversity of our organization, and that's actually now being lived out. So our goals are being met in these early days. We've sold our building in Colorado, so that's final. Some of our staff is still there. We're leasing back one floor of that building, but you probably won't see much visible progress now that Kmart is gone over the winter. Well, civil engineers and architects and all those smart people start doing their jobs. But we're grateful. We're grateful for Andrew, and we'll try not to throw him under the bus at this moment for -- for bringing us here and then abandoning us after we get here. But his work in providing us the opportunity to get the Jobs Ohio grant was very significant, being the first nonprofit to receive a grant from Jobs Ohio is tremendous encouragement to us and help in purchasing and tearing down the Kmart. So we're making progress. We're happy. We have no complaints, and they wanted us to be good citizens. And so it's fun to be part of the Tomato Festival, and we'll look for other opportunities to get our staff to volunteer for various functions and begin to get involved with the Chamber of Commerce as well. So got to do a walkabout and award for with Meredith, Councilwoman Meredith, and so woman Meredith, so grateful for just the little opportunities we're having to get to know our community. And we'll continue to work towards good citizenship with you. So happy to answer any questions at any time that you might have or anything that arises. But so far, so good for the Alliance and our partnership with Reynoldsburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Do have a couple of events. One of them I'm going to skip because I believe we're going to have someone speak on that one, but we do have our Community Town Hall this Wednesday at 6:30 PM at Baldwin Middle Road Middle School. This is sponsored by the Reynoldsburg Police Department, the City of Reynoldsburg, and the Reynoldsburg City School District, where we will discuss how to make our community safer and how to build those communities between our community as well as the police department. We have our Community Cleanup Day this October 16th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So I'm sure I'll see all of council out there at some point, helping to volunteer with some of our activities, including shred it, the pill disposal, bike donation, flag disposal. Those will all occur at JFK, and our hazardous and bulk materials will be collected at Huber Park, so I look forward to seeing you there. We also have an opportunity. We have partnered with the Ohio State University with their sustainability programs, and we will have a community meeting on sustainability on Wednesday, October 20th, from 6:30 to 8:00 on Zoom about how Reynoldsburg is going to be taking steps to make us a more sustainable city. I'll spare the other Halloween-related news for our other guests that's coming up, but I also wanted to give council an update on our revenue. As of October 1st, we have surpassed all revenue accumulated in 2020, and we're on pace for a record-breaking year due to a number of businesses, so far at last count, over 55 that have opened since January of 2020. And while our spending has increased a little bit with some of these property purchases, as mentioned before, you know, already we're able to turn one back and put that money back into our pockets, as well as the other ones that we're planning on. So we're in great shape as we continue to move forward into 2022 and beyond. It is my hope that the first meeting in November, we will be able to bring a budget to you so you can look in review as we get close to the end of the year, as we look to build bigger and better things throughout the city of Reynoldsburg. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation by the Auditor of State to the Reynoldsburg Auditor's Department.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. My name is Tori Hubner, and I'm the Central Regional Liaison for the Auditor of State's Office. Unfortunately, Auditor Faber could not be here tonight, but I'm here in his stead. As many of you may already know, the Auditor of State's Office does audit all state and local government entities, so that's about 6,000 people throughout the state, and only between four to six people even qualify to receive the award with distinction, and so even fewer receive it. So this is a really great honor that your fiscal department has earned multiple years, I know at least three years that I've been here. And in order to receive this award, you must have a clean audit report, which means that you file your comprehensive annual finance report timely, your GAAP accounting basis, and you do not have any ethics referrals, bank reconciliation issues, and no findings for recovery. So, and it also means that you have great public records policies, which is a big thing in our office. So on behalf of the Auditor's Office, I'd like to present Auditor Sasek with his award. Do you want masks on for the photo? Do you want to say a few words and take a picture?
Oh, okay. Words. President Jenkins, Mayor Begany, and everybody that's here. There goes the hearing aid. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction represents reliability and consistency. It represents producing results for our community, and it represents the integrity and honesty of our work. Nothing that we do is easy. It isn't always fun, but what we do is right. And I want to thank Deputy Auditor Stephanie Cornell, Secretary Carrie Shell, and most especially my finance manager, Joni Crawford, and say my appreciations to Brenda Browning, who retired, because she did a lot of work for us last year. But thank you very much, and we hope to go forward into 2022. 2020 was such a rough year. It was the first time we did a single audit, and it included federal funds. The federal funds, we had over 50 meetings from the Auditor's Office. It would have been one thing if we had a set of directions that were stable in the very beginning in January, but they changed every month. And I want to thank the mayor, the city attorney, and the team that we had when we helped the city businesses with the $10,000 grants. We all did this as a team, and I accept this award on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have our motions. A motion to approve a resolution to recognize Domestic Violence Month. Councilman Savadi, will you please read this motion?
Thank you, President Jenkins. It's a resolution to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in one day in the United States and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than 9,000 requests for service, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet victims' needs. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community and throughout the United States. And whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. And whereas the need for safe houses and for our survivors' most urgent need. And whereas the city of Reynoldsburg joins with others across Ohio and in the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the city of Reynoldsburg. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems adds a value and powerful component to transforming our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Reynoldsburg, that council does hereby recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages the community to supporting and finding assistance for anyone experiencing domestic violence past this 11th day of October 2021.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Councilmember Bryant, is there a second?
I'll second, and I want to say, Lou, thank you for bringing this resolution to council. Much appreciated.
Councilmember Baker? Are there any other questions or comments or any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve a resolution to recognize Stormwater Awareness Week. Director Dormant?
Yes, so this motion was brought before council tonight. It's a national awareness for stormwater. It's somewhat fitting as we have dealt with this the past several years in the city, but obviously being a national week of awareness, it brings to light obviously the issues that's out there with climate change and other things that are going on with development. So we felt that this was a fitting resolution to bring before the council to approve and just to recognize that as we continue to spend a lot of efforts on staff and on our engineering side to find solutions and to deal with this as we continue to grow as a city.
Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Councilmember Savadi, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lawson Row? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports. Liquor permit request, Chief Baker?
Good evening, Council President, members of council. The first investigation was completed for a transfer of a liquor permit held by MSR 2009 INC. that was doing business as Fuzzy Cigar and More at 1750 Bryce Road. The permit is being transferred to Aish Ousmane LLC, who will continue operating the carryout business at the same location. Aish Ousmane LLC is owned by Ousmane Arshad. The liquor permit is for a C1, C2 class, which is for beer, wine, and mixed beverages in sealed containers sold for the carryout only. There have been no alcohol-related complaints at the location for the past two years. The Ohio Department of Liquor Control advised a tax hold could prevent this permit from being transferred, and that the applicant would need to get this tax hold satisfied to allow the transfer. I do not recommend we request a hearing for this permit application from being transferred. That's the standalone carryout next to Century City. The second investigation was completed for a new liquor permit application for Sunrise Grocery Mark LLC located at 6559 East Livingston Avenue. The business will be operated as Sunrise Grocery Mark in the Black Lick Plaza. The business will be owned by Bokta Karke. The liquor permit is for a C1, C2 class, which is for beer, wine, and mixed beverages in sealed containers sold for carryout only. This will be a new business, so there are no prior calls related to this business. However, there have been many police calls to a separate carryout in that same location, the same plaza. The Department of Liquor Control advised our investigator that the owner has no other active liquor permits, and they know of nothing that would prevent the liquor permit from being issued. I also do not recommend we request a hearing for this permit application.
Thank you.
I have a question, Chief. Don't go nowhere.
Yes, sir.
It was last month, there was a restaurant that came in and asked for liquor permit, and we voted it down because they were trying to get around to add an additional liquor permit, which would put us over the amount of permits that were there. And Chief, Assistant Chief Giselle, let us know that there's been trying to get control of the drunk driving and stuff like that, the crime in the area. So how would this play into that factor? Because it's really, it's not that far from each other. So what is the difference between granting this one a new one and the other one that was trying to be granted last month?
Well, this one's allowable without any exceptions to the current law. So the state has laws in place that limit the number of permits within a certain amount of area. This one is allowable under the law. There's really nothing that we can object from for this application. So my guess, I was not here during the last meeting, was it was a different type of permit that put the number over for that area.
Okay.
Liquor Control is not telling us that this is an addition, has too many for that area.
The difference is that this is a transfer, not a new addition?
No, 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 not that one. The other one, he said it's a new one.
This one is a new one.
Yeah, the grocery store is a new one.
Yeah, then it would be in a classification where we haven't reached the max in the city. On the one that we did, on the one that you considered, I think it was probably two or three months ago, that was an application for a permit where we had already reached the maximum amount in that area. And the only way to get around that particular exception is to meet the development project rule. And in that case, council had determined that the additional restaurant was not quote-unquote a development project.
So I'm just going to make it clear, because like I said, they're not that far apart from each other. So I didn't know there's a line that's split down, like, well, this half can't have this, you know, is that the max? This half is not?
From what I know about the other permit, that was allowing consumption on premises, this permit is specifically for the sale of beer, wine, and mixed beverages in sealed containers. So ideally, you have somebody going into a convenience store, buying a sealed alcoholic beverage and taking that beverage home. So that would be one of the differences in the type of permit. Without having that application in front of me, I do not know what the permit classification was for the restaurant, but I would assume it was different because it would be for consumption on premises, which then you have people driving away from that premises.
Well, I mean, for me, booze is booze, whether it's beer, wine, or liquor. And the fact that for that instance, is, because you can go into a restaurant and get booze to go, liquor to go, I'm sorry, not booze, but liquor to go with a purchase of food. And so, you know, to me, it's no difference than going into a carryout, getting a six-pack, or going to a restaurant, getting a couple margaritas to go. So that's the only, that's the reason why I asked the question.
Did I answer it for you?
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Next, we have the auditor's report. Would the clerk please read the auditor's report?
The Auditor's Office submitted the budget by department and classification for the months of July and August 2021.
Thank you. I have a question while we're talking about the auditor's report. I noticed that there is a website, and it's called checkbookohio.gov, and I'm not sure if anyone has heard of that, but it lists the city's expenditures, and I noticed that Reynoldsburg School is listed there amongst other cities and counties in Ohio. And I just had a question if we were ever on this website or why we don't participate.
Thank you, Madam President. Checkbook Ohio, we used to belong to it. Our system does not marry up the data perfectly with it. So it would be something we could look into in the future if you'd like us to do so. We did have instances before where data was reported, and it was an error. And that's something that we don't want to have. We don't want to impugn anybody. We want accurate reporting of our numbers, but it's something I can look into if it's something that you would like.
Is there a cause associated with it?
I'm not sure yet. I'd have to...
Do you remember the last time we participated? Because when I went to the website to look, I couldn't find anything for the city.
The last time we were on it was probably in 2018.
Okay. Okay. If you can look into that and let me know, I'm just curious, because I noticed Reynoldsburg Schools was listed, and I noticed some in the other cities, and throughout Ohio, it's just not, I looked for like Cincinnati and some, Gehanna, Pataskala.
There are numerous other software companies that come and try to sell things to the city all the time. One is Open Government, which is almost like Open Checkbook. And I looked into it. They've... They've did Mansfield, and the cost was about $1,500, I think, about a month. And then when I asked them how many people actually look at it, they never called me back because I wanted to see what it would cost per...
And that would be important to know, to see who's actually using the data and looking at it. You don't want to be a part of something where it isn't being utilized. But also, you want to also have transparency as far as our city government.
Well, there is nothing more transparent than the comprehensive annual financial report, and we are the only city entity in Reynoldsburg that does that. And that is, that is the state of the measurement of art and the pinnacle of financial reporting.
Okay, thank you for that information. Next, we have Development Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Development Park and Recreation Committee for October 11, 2021. Members in attendance, Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself, and you, Madam President. The first item on the agenda is ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 7277 East Main Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring emergency. This is the first, the first read, I'm sorry, happened on September 27, 2021. Director Bowser?
Thank you, Chairman Baker, Madam President, and other members of council. This ordinance is before you. After reviewing and coordinating with the EPA, as the mayor had mentioned in his update during the first read on this, we felt it was within the capability of the city to be able to do the remediation ourselves. So the city will be purchasing instead of the CIC for this parcel and the next. Just wanted to give that quick update on that. And if I could, Chairman Baker as well, we'll probably be getting a few more liquor licenses as well with the new tick, uptick in our population. Now we're over 40,000, we'll get a little few extra. They break them down by warehousing, distribution. And as the chief was saying, it's, it's a difference. It may not be a difference for you, but there is a difference between opening it and cracking it on, on premises or taking it home and doing it, so.
Not implying, I'd like to have a code one every now and then. Any questions from the committee? Councilman Cotner?
So first question, it says we're to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg. What's the plan for this property?
The, the plan, the current plan is we have additional dollars set in stone for that, for the demolition of both of the buildings, the cleanup of the property, and to backfill some of the, or excuse me, not backfill, but take away some of the contaminated soil that's there that the EPA had found. And then we'll be working with a developer, either through RFP or another process, to find a suitable new structure, new development on that parcel.
And so this doesn't obviously include demolition and cleanup? What's the estimated cost of those items?
Oh, it does. It includes that. That's why we've up 30,000 additional dollars, I believe, we've added into the contingency for the demolition and cleanup of the site.
And this parcel, this first one is half an acre-ish, thereabouts?
Yeah, I don't have that data in front of me, but yeah, I would say you're probably roughly...
$720,000. That's a, that's a lot of money for a contaminated place that we have to clean up and build and resell. And we're selling the property out by the cemetery for 100,000 an acre?
190,000 an acre. It's five total acres, we're almost getting all of the proceeds back.
Right. Again, I said before, I liked that idea, I thought that one was a great, I just, $720,000 for a small parcel that needs cleaned up and resold, I have some concerns about that and what the use would be. So that's a lot of money for that little piece of land.
I, I don't disagree, but I hope you would agree that the amount of money that the city has put into that area has not been some small feat. And I think by cleaning up this parcel amongst some of the other parcels, you're going to create a better walkable downtown. And sometimes I think the city's got to take the first lead in the investment so other developers can follow.
Which the city has done. I think there's been, again, a lot from the lots to the Happy Dragon to the plans. I think there's been a significant amount. I, again, I just think that's a lot of money on that little parcel. That's, that's, that's one of the most concerning facts about that. And then, you know, the other, again, not, not, not a cheap amount either on that little piece back there to clean up. So I just have some concerns spending that much money on those little, those little parcels there with no real plan in place and a lot of potential challenges still.
Any other questions from the committee? Any from council? Councilwoman Strickland?
Not a question, but a comment. So I liked your statement when you said that the city does have to take a lead on bringing in new development, getting the city the way that we would like to, for it to be, to bring those new development partners in, and also making sure that we continue to grow our city into the city that we want. So thank you for the work that you and the mayor and whoever else has been working on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland.
Any other questions? Okay. Actually, I do, I have a question. The figure you said is 750, correct? Or what was the figure?
720. Councilmember Cotner said that.
Oh, 720, okay, sorry. And that includes demolition, cleanup, and whatever that might be?
No, that's for the purchase price.
Just the purchase, okay. I'm sorry, I just couldn't remember.
No, that's okay.
I knew you mentioned it, I just couldn't remember what you said. And part of that is, how did the city come to that price, the seven?
Yeah, just like the other two parcels, the PNC Bank as well as the Happy Dragon, we had an appraisal done. The purchase price, we feel, is still in line with those appraisals, both the PNC, Happy Dragon, and now this, this parcel here, or the two combined parcels.
Oh, okay, okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, I'll make the motion to go ahead and move this ordinance on the council. Is there any further discussion? Oh. Oh, sorry. My, I'm sorry. Okay. I do, oh, yeah, we do. I do apologize, that is my error. I move that we amend this ordinance to add an additional appropriation of $1,200 to cover the cost of the demolition. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Two ayes and one nays, this ordinance is amended. Now, I'd like to make a motion that we forward this ordinance on the council for a second reading and emergency approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Two to one, this ordinance will be passed on to council for a second reading and emergency approval. Second item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring emergency. First read was November 27, 2021. Director Bowser?
Thank you, Chairman Baker. Same thing with this parcel, this is just the back half of that parcel.
Okay.
Or of that property, excuse me.
Okay. Any comments from the committee? Any comments or questions from council? Okay, seeing none? I, oops, I'm sorry. I move that we amend this ordinance to add additional appropriation of $11,360 to cover the cost of the demolition. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Two to one, this ordinance will be forwarded on to council for a second reading and emergency approval. The third item on the agenda is an ordinance creating the Summit Road Tax Increment Financing District, declaring improvements to the partial within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those, of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those services payments and specifying the, sorry, the public infrastructure improvements that benefit our service partials in the incentive district. Attorney Shook or Mr. Bow, well, Mr. Bowser, since you're still standing there, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Baker. This is the second phase of the Eastwood development. There are some changes coming soon to planning commission. All 50-foot lots, all owner occupied. I think there was some, American Homes for Rent was interested at one point. They have now since backed out. This is for the TIF, specifically for the city to collect the property tax on this. Proposed improvements include the future expansion of Summit Road, the addition of bike trails and sidewalks that will go along adjacent to that, as well as a traffic calming mechanism, probably a signal roundabout at Summit and Main as well. We've known that we have needed that for some time. This is another way for the city to be able to build infrastructure as we continue to grow to the east. So I just ask that you support that. We're going to work on some additional estimates, but currently, right now, what we're looking at from the developers is about $14.5 million in, in revenue over the 10-year period for this property for the second phase.
Okay. Is there any questions from the committee on this ordinance?
Just a quick question about one of the last comments you made, Mr. Bowser. Putting a roundabout at Summit and Main is something that's discussed. Main, what, what would the state's involvement be with that?
Just like it is with pretty much anything that we do there on Main Street, we coordinate with them, but when it is in the city, that is, comes underneath our purview. This is not the first time that a roundabout would have been proposed on a major thoroughfare or a state route. I simply say that because it's been discussed in, in some of the, the traffic meetings that we've had with Eastwood on what would better serve the community, whether that is a roundabout there or a signal. When we get into engineering and we decide that, I think that council will have a decision to make, as well as the engineers, but simply just providing the options of what has been discussed at this point.
And again, I know that would be quite a ways down, down the road. That seems like a pretty big undertaking, and knowing that it took the state, I don't know how many years to continue dangling the carrot out in front of us of them paving Main Street, I just wonder what, again, their contribution and their assistance would be, or whether this all falls on the city.
This would be something, even if it was the signal, this would be something that would all fall on the city's purview. Thank you.
Is there any other questions from council? I, I have a question discussing about the roundabout. Were there discussions about putting a light there? Because I remember a few, actually, it was 2018. A resident reached out to me about talking with ODOT about putting a light there because of, it's hard to turn, if you're going left, out of, off of Summit onto Main Street. And I think it, a resident almost got hit trying to make that turn. And so that was something I asked back then. ODOT said there wasn't enough traffic that would warrant one. However, now that we are growing out that way and this development is going to warrant one, did, was there any inquiry about that?
I mean, we'll work with ODOT as we continue to move through with that process. You know, there's always grant funding opportunities, and we'll continue to work with ODOT as best as we can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think what we're looking at this is to kind of take a little bit of what we are experiencing with Wagner Road is while, I think by the traffic studies, they would probably say that a traffic light is not warranted at Priestley and Wagner. However, we feel it is in the best interest of the community to do so. And one thing that we've continuously heard is, you know, planning ahead for the infrastructure aspect. So a traffic light or roundabout at Summit would also be something that we would do, you know, before the traffic gets to the point that it has on Wagner Road. This is more preventative in action. To kind of take those steps as we continue to expand out east.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Bryant?
I may have misunderstood at some point, but I thought that you couldn't put any roundabouts on a state route like that.
You actually can. 161 there at Plain City is a really great example of that, where they have the new Costco over there. That's just one of them. And that would be a similar size because it's a two-lane each way. Just as an example that we've talked about with EMT.
Okay.
I didn't mean to bring up the debate about the roundabouts. I almost regret, you know, rescind my comment on that. I just simply was saying that we're, we're utilizing these funds to plan for these traffic improvements before it becomes a problem.
I guess one benefit would be, well, for roundabout there, I think it will prohibit the trucks that are coming from the logistic companies out there to take a different route instead of go straight through town. So I'm just putting that out there. So, um, is there any other questions? Okay. I'll make the motion that we forward this ordinance on the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, ayes have it, and this motion will be moved to council for its first reading. Just to clean up something, and this is my error. The second ordinance that we did for the real property of 1415 Water Street, we took the vote to amend that ordinance, and we still need to take a vote to move that forward to council. So I'm going to bring that item back up here so we can go ahead and clean that up. I do apologize. So is there a motion to move this ordinance forward to council?
I so moved.
Councilwoman Lawson Row, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those opposed? Go ahead, Attorney Shook, I knew you were going to cut in somewhere.
Can we get a second on that motion?
She did, she just said?
I think she made the first move.
I've made a motion because that's what you asked.
Yeah. Well, I made, oh, I apologize, I should have, I'll make that second motion. Does that suffice?
Thank you.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All those in favor of moving this ordinance on to council, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Two to one, this ordinance will be for the council amended for, for a second reading. Am I good? Alright, thank you. Madam President, you got the mic back, I don't want it no more.
Thank you.
Well, tonight, anyway.
There is no Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting this evening, so we'll move ahead with Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Strickland?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for October 11, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself, and President Jenkins. The first item is an ordinance to amend Chapter 958 Stormwater Charges, Section 958.06, Equivalent Residential Unit Assignment in the Code of Ordinance for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. Director Dormant?
Thank you, Councilwoman Strickland. So it's that time of year, unfortunately, where we start talking about the Columbus fees that technically get passed along to us and that all the suburban satellite communities pay. So this is a Columbus rate they charge us for stormwater. We obviously pass that along. We get a bill from Columbus, just like we do for the water and sewer usage. We do use some of this fund, some of this fund, though, actually, to reimburse ourselves for our own work as we do stormwater improvements. There's a small percentage on here as well. That gets put into an enterprise account. Once again, that account can only be used for stormwater work. We can't use this money and move it to pay for something in Parks and Rec, or actually, even in the street department, it's strictly for stormwater. So once again, this is Columbus rates. I think next council meeting, we're going to be discussing water and sewer as well. But that's really all it is. And it's based on an ERU, so I should kind of give you a little history on this. So years ago, when the Clean Water Act was passed, there was all these mandates for communities to improve their stormwater infrastructure and to be critical of design when it comes forward, designing something for pre and post-construction. So the rule of thumb is when you develop a site, say it's a cornfield, the water cannot leave that cornfield at a higher rate than it did when it was a cornfield, even if you paved the entire lot. So these rules were put in place, and what they came up with was what they call a typical ERU. And that is your impervious area, basically. And there's a standard kind of formula to determine that. For residential units, they all pretty much pay the same ERU. This would be a 24 cent increase per month per residential unit. I know it seems like a lot, but it's fairly, fairly small. Your commercial users, though, are going to pay, you know, a fairly significant fee compared to what a residential unit pays.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be... This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. As there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting back to you, President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we have Finance and Administration Committee. Councilmember Savadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for October 11, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself and President Jenkins. The first ordinance on the agenda is an ordinance to transfer funds for the purchase of real properties at 7277 East Main Street and 1415 Water Street to be used by the City of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. The first read was 9/27/2021. Director Bowser.
Thank you, Chairman Savadi. This is the follow-up ordinance for the funds appropriation of the purchase contracts you recently sent to council.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions for the director on this one? From the committee? From council? All right, seeing none. I move that we amend the appropriation for this ordinance from $850,000 to $874,580 to cover the demolition costs. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Bryant. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance is amended. Now I move to forward this ordinance to council for a second reading and emergency approval as amended. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Strickland. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries and that ordinance, that amended ordinance will be forwarded to council for a second reading and emergency approval as amended. The second item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing local aggregation of retail electric loads in accordance with Section 4928.20 of the Ohio Revised Code. The mayor, Begany, is going to start this one off.
Thank you, Chair Salvati, Madam President, members of council. As discussed in the last meeting, we talked about the preferred vendor of the electric aggregates. And with us once again is Volunteer Energy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here this evening. Do you have any questions for us this evening?
Are there any questions? I have questions, but I'll. I guess my question is that I read the ordinance a couple of times. So there's a, it's fairly vague on what it will cost the consumer. All those, I believe all those spaces were left blank. And I was just curious how that will work, like with the gas aggregation. It was like 8% less than Columbia Gas. Obviously, this one's going to be a little different, but I was just curious if you had any detail on how that will work.
Yeah, good question. Simply because the market fluctuates so frequently, it really wouldn't be relevant to give a price at this time because that price would change by tomorrow. So I will work that out with the mayor, the director, and if it needs to go, you know, to council to approve the final price, then that's what we'll, that's what we'll need to do. But the objective will be, prior to executing the agreement, that the price that we put out there would be less than the price to compare from AEP. That's the goal.
So is this contract different in that is this some, where we lock in a price for a year, two years, three years, whatever it is? I mean, because I know the gas one's a percentage. And that can fluctuate on how Columbia Gas's price fluctuates, I assume. But this one's written differently.
Correct. This is a, this is a fixed cost. And once that cost is determined, it would stay the same per kilowatt for the duration of that agreement, whether it's 12 months or 24 months.
And that's independent, as independent of if AEP fluctuates?
Yeah, AEP will fluctuate. It typically does about four times a year. But this fixed price will not fluctuate.
This service is for electric?
Yes, ma'am.
So if your electric goes out, then do, would the resident call your company? Or if there's a power outage? Or if there's, I don't know, electrical wiring that, you know, transformer or any of those sort of things? Who services those problems?
AEP still.
They still would be responsible?
Correct, and, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Councilwoman Strickland.
Thank you. When will we, when will we know when there will be a fixed price? Do you have a time limit or a time frame when that will be?
The, I believe that the third reading, I believe, is like November 8. So we will give a estimated, or we will give a, we'll give our bid, our quote on that rate prior to November 8. I think there needs to be some discussion as to locking in that price. We will present a price before November 8. That price will change. It can, it's going to change because of the market changes. Then we will, we will leave it up to the administration and to the council to lock in that price prior to the start date of March 2022. Does that?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
Just to educate me and probably some of the other people here, I'm assuming there's a really good reason, but I don't know it, as to why the, this electric contract would work so much differently than the gas contract.
It's, it's just a different, it's a different commodity. I can't answer that in detail. I just know that the two are totally separate because of the markets. You know, gas is something that we are able to do a guaranteed savings on. The fixed price with the electric, it's, it's just a different commodity and it's treated a different way.
Head, Councilmember Lawson Row.
Thank you. I know when you were here, the last time, we had discussions about gas and there was a lot of discussion about opting in and opting out. Would that basically hold true for electric as well?
It would be the same type of program. It would be an opt-out program, correct?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any, Councilmember Cottner?
And so to follow a little further with Councilwoman Lawson Rose, you can, the resident can opt out anytime they want.
Yes.
So if we've set the rate and volunteer has guaranteed that rate and somehow during that term, the AEP rate or another supplier that that resident would choose, if they find something that would be significantly lower or any lower for, at all, they can call you and cancel right then and switch to the lower and better rate.
Yes.
At any time, just because they want to.
At any time. They can, they can opt out at the beginning of the offering of the program.
Right.
They can also opt out at any point during the program. No, no fees, no penalties to do that.
But again, opting out at the beginning, they're not going to know where they are. And what we're, what we're hearing a little more clearly is that volunteer takes a risk on this by saying, and so does council, take a risk by saying, we, you, you guys are the experts. You know where the market's moving a whole lot better than, than any of us would. You're supplying, you're giving us what you believe to be the best rate. But if something changes in the climate and in the commodity and AEP goes down, well, if AEP goes up, we're, the resident still comes out ahead because you're locked in at that lower rate anyway. But if AEP were to go down, or they can go and choose another supplier, they can opt out just for that reason, six months in, and they can save the money that way. And so they're not locked into this for any term whatsoever.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from committee or council? All right. So I move we forward this ordinance to council to have its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Strickland. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries and the ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first read. All right. Third on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to establish a process and eligibility requirements for a grant program directed towards female, minority, and veteran-owned new business in the city of Reynoldsburg and appropriating funds. And Director Bowser is back.
Thank you, Chairman Salvati. This ordinance is before you, first of three reads to establish a baseline and a process, plus an application for this grant. It's be an upwards of $10,000 for these applicants that would be expanding a current existing business or relocating a, or locating a business within Reynoldsburg. I think this is a great effort. I know this was brought from Councilmember Strickland. And I basically took her thoughts and ideas and basically put them on paper. And now we have, I think, a great ordinance establishing this and our requirements. I'd be more than happy to answer any and all questions relating to this.
Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you, also Director Bowser. And also, I know Councilmember Stacy had been working along with me on trying to get this together, so thank you. I do have a question regarding the, how the funds will be established. Will it be divided up amongst the, because now we have minority, female, and veterans. How would that money, are those funds be divided up amongst those three different groups?
We don't have a set requirement. It was simply that we're going to take in the applicants and then we have a matrix based on need that we've written out. And really, a lot of it is going to become first come, first served as we have set aside, I believe, 200,000 in American recoveries, 100,000, excuse me.
100,000 for 2021 this year and then we'll come back and do this again sometime after January.
Okay, thank you. What I would like to see happen, if possible, is really trying to establish some type of process that deals with dividing, you know, the money up amongst those three groups. I want to make sure that each group, right, female, minority, and veterans have a set amount of money that's set aside. Once that money is, you know, gone, is gone. Until you, you know, have some type of process for the next group. Does that, does that make sense what I'm asking?
Absolutely. I guess I would, my question would be, what if we get zero applicants, maybe for the veterans, and we get 10 applicants that happen to be females? And we run out of money because we've saved it for the other piles? What would you want at that point?
So hopefully, we are actively going after these businesses.
I, we, there's been already a huge push. I think we have six female, minority-owned businesses that are already looking to apply. So I wouldn't want to peg ourselves to where we can't give the people the grants that have applied first, where we've pushed aside money into different categories. So I would just caution on that.
That's fair. Well, I would like to be part of the conversations.
Absolutely.
Perhaps instead of a, I mean, granted, 2021 is going to be a little bit different because we're in October and it's a limited time to get the applications in. But perhaps when we look specifically to 2022, where we could do maybe X amount of dollars per quarter in that way. Because what I found when we were doing the CARES Act grant funding, there were a lot of people that said, I wish I would have known when. And so maybe when we get that first batch out there from 2021, that will help generate more awareness. And instead of doing it all in January, maybe we appropriate the funds, but we do it maybe on a, based on a quarterly basis to make sure that, I guess you'd say the application period opens at various times to make sure that we expand the network as much as possible. That's, that's a completely logical solution to that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yeah, I might suggest some sort of point system because that's three categories you could have in one person theoretically. So dividing it into the three categories may not be great because if you have somebody who's a female, minority, veteran that wants to start a business, they hit all three boxes.
But even if they do hit all three boxes, you could put something in there. If you qualify for one, you know, you kind of don't qualify for the other because you already qualify for, so you're going to get some money. So that way, some, one person is not dipping in the till two other times.
I'm just saying a point system.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, to make it fair. Because I see what you're saying, you know, somebody could be a veteran, it could be a minority, and they could be a woman. But if you already hit on one of the three, you're going to get some money. Just because you're all three don't mean you're going to get three different checks.
No, I'm not saying that they should. I'm just saying that if we mark it down to three different categories, then, you know, what do you do?
I think at that point, we would, you know, dependent upon the total number of applications, we would go through the process to make sure that there's no one overrepresented area all the way throughout and try and make it as equitable all the way across. And I think because we have the discretion as we go through this, I think we'll be able to maintain that process. And like I said, we're, we can still work out between reads one and two, two and, and two and three. City Attorney Shook? You look like you're ready to jump in there.
No, I just think that we need to be a little careful if we're talking about trying to set hard numbers or percentages based on groupings within these classifications. The key here is to be equitable. And currently, the language provides, you know, discretion for that equity. I think similar to what we did with the Small Business Grant Program with the CARES Act funds in 2020, it might be appropriate to put into the ordinance a committee that will be part of the selection process, which could, of course, include a member or two of council so that you're at the table. That might help to ensure the equity that council is looking for.
Is that something we could look at for 2022?
I would definitely expect these to really be utilized, though. I think the mayor and I, we really, early on, discussed how much funds and it was surprising by how much need that there is.
And I, and I just want to agree with you on that. That's the reason why me and Councilwoman Strickland wanted to do this because we saw that there's a need. And for us to be able to step up and help, that, you know, shows the character of our city that, hey, we want to help. We want you to come here and be part of our community. And I do think going down the road, there's going to be other entities that's going to take this idea, take this blueprint and use it in their community. So I wholeheartedly agree with you.
I didn't mean to cut you out, both of you.
Sure, you did because you was laughing while you did it.
Because I looked over at you, you gave me a face.
I mean, personally, I feel that rather than, I mean, it's just my opinion, but rather than say there's a certain amount of money for each of those three categories, that we should definitely collect the data. And if we're seeing it skewed towards, you know, the only people that have applied are women, then that should tell the city that you need to go out and try and find, or better message to the minority community that it's available or go out and better message to the veteran community that it's available. And the same goes if it's skewed any, any other way. The data should be used as to who we should be, who obviously hasn't heard about it because, I mean, it's free money, so. because I mean, it's free money, so.
One other question, um, any just thought about, um, as Councilman Baker just said.
Did you say Council Baker?
Councilman Baker just said, we want these people to be part of the community, making sure there's some longevity that they stay. I mean, you know, with, with, you know, this would be eligible for a home business or even like an internet business. We would not wanna see somebody we give $10,000 to and they move out in six months. Any way we can put any kind of whole, you know, must stay in, you know, must be within the city for at least one year or something along those lines.
Potentially. I would, I would add to, um, it's not an outright 10,000. It's based on.
Up to.
Yeah.
I, I, I got it.
Up to cost, yeah.
Again, there's a lot of, $10,000 can go very quickly when someone is expanding a business or starting a business. And we also don't wanna just see it taken advantage of where someone starts up something with a home-based or, or again, whatever it may be, that would be an easy, you're here six, eight months and you're moving out of the city that quickly, so. Small business is tough and I'm not trying to make it tougher on them. If they, you know, don't make it, that's one thing, but we don't wanna see them take the city dollars and, you know, head across to some other spot just to, as they started up. I mean, cause we're not talking a specific brick and mortar exactly and it doesn't have to be a new build or something like that. So there's a lot of things that they could start, expand, and then decide, oh, we're closing here and we're gonna move out to, again, wherever it may be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, that could be done. Uh, I think we can get creative here with the language, especially with the application and the qualification requirements. It would certainly require some oversight and accounting by the city going forward to determine whether that money is being used appropriately and whether that business is staying in the city. Uh, there may be, of course, a practical problem if a business goes into bankruptcy. But beyond that, we could certainly get creative.
I mean, we, we used to do that with six months of reviews and, and things, you know, of that nature all the time anyway. So again, I'm not trying to put another burden on the small business. Again, we want them to succeed. What we don't wanna see is, yes, six months, they, they realize, you know, they, their lease is ending, they're ready to go to another community and again, eight, eight, nine months later, they're same business, but they've, you know, they've closed that lease and taken a new lease at another spot in Pickerington, Etna, Blacklake, whatever. That's, that's the only thing that I think seems like a reasonable and pretty easy follow-up, just to say, hey, you're still in business, you're still serving the city of Reynoldsburg, you're one year in, it's done. If you left within, again, less than a year, you've gotta pay back some, some or all of the grant that you received from the taxpayers.
I was literally just about, that last point, I was just about to say that cause I do agree with you on that, you know, this is, um, public money and we are trying to increase our businesses here. And the fact that if you do close up shop and move or whatever it might be, that you do have, there should be some where you have to pay back.
Again, I wanna be clear too, not on if you went bankrupt, not if you didn't make it. I just, I'm worried about the one that, like I said, your lease is about up, you move out and you open up the same business, the same everything, just two miles outside the city. That's, that's more my concern.
I think between this meeting and the next, I'll work with Attorney Shook to come up with a longevity clause that we can put inside of it.
All right, any more questions from the full council? All right, seeing none, um, I'll move the four of this council, ordinance to council as a first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Strickland. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. Uh, that concludes the business for the Finance and Administration Committee and I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next we have consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items 11A through C are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency adoption unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward for emergency approval. Would the clerk please read items 11A through C?
A, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 7277 East Main Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. C, an ordinance to transfer funds for the purchase of real properties at 7277 East Main Street and 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances?
So moved.
Councilmember Baker, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Savadi. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Madam President, that was 5-1.
These ordinances are approved with five affirmative votes and one negative vote. Next we have a consent agenda for a first reading. Items 12A through D are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward for a first reading. Would the clerk please call, please read items 13A through D.
A, an ordinance creating the Summit Road Tax Increment, Increment Financing District, declaring an improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to establish a process and eligibility requirements for a grant program directed toward female, minority, and veteran-owned new businesses in the city of Reynoldsburg and appropriating funds. C, an ordinance to amend Chapter 958 Stormwater Charges, Section 958.06 Equivalent Residential Unit, ERU, of the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio Codified Ordinances. D, an ordinance authorizing local aggregation of retail electric loads in accordance with Section 4928.20 of the Higher Revised Code.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Next we have consent agenda for a second reading. Item 13A is part of a consent agenda. These, this ordinance stands for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an, uh, remove this item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward with a second reading. Would the clerk please read item 13A?
An ordinance to authorize the auditor to establish a new agency fund account and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance stands for a second reading. Next we have consent agenda for a third reading. Items 14A through D are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward with a vote on these ordinances.
Could you remove item D, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you remove item D and call that separately?
Item D as in dog?
Yes.
Okay. Would the clerk please read items 14A through C?
A, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHNT for the engineering plans and preparation of bid documents for the 2022 street and sidewalk maintenance and repair program and appropriating funds therefore. B, an ordinance authorizing EMHNT to conduct survey and preliminary engineering design services for wagon or road improvements and appropriating funds therefore. C, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Civic Engage Central for website design and appropriate funds.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances, which are 14A through C?
So moved.
Councilmember Savadi, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bryant? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember, oh, the, Madam President, that is 6-0.
These ordinances are approved with six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Would the clerk please read 14D?
An ordinance to approve the final plat, plan for the Rose Hill Townhome Development.
May I have a motion to approve?
Madam President, you probably wanna offer discussion.
Is there any discussion on 14D? May I have a motion to approve this ordinance? Councilmember Bryant, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Savadi, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson-Roe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Madam President, that is a 5-1 vote.
This ordinance is approved with five affirmative votes and one negative vote. Next we have other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to discuss? Yes, Councilwoman Meredith Lawson-Roe?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to share a couple of items. One, we received an email from, uh, the Lions Club and Ms. April Darling asked that I remind my council colleagues in the community about the Lions Club Annual Auction, which is slated for October 14th at 6 o'clock at the Summit Station Lions Building. Two, I'd like to share, um, the signature program that, um, our council, um, passed. Everyone passed the, um, our signature program with the exception of one person, the civilian review, ooh, I can't talk, civilian review board. Out of that civilian review, review board that was fully endorsed by the FOP, the, um, Citizens Police Academy, um, was birthed. And, um, I'd like to share that that Citizens Police Academy, we have, I, I believe, two more, um, classes before we're finished. And I'd like to, um, invite my council colleagues along with, um, neighbors to participate in the Citizens Police Academy. It's a great program. You learn about the training. You get a bird's eye view of what our police officers are faced with. I had an opportunity to participate in some scenarios and, um, I'm sad to admit that I started out strong, but I eventually died and they asked me, what happened? And I said, I would've called the police. They said, well, you are the police. So hats off, chief. Third, um, you, you notice that I have a, a pink flower in my hair. It is breast cancer awareness and one in eight women are diagnosed with cancer, with breast cancer. And I'd like to just, um, make a public, uh, request for all of my, uh, council colleagues, men and women, to, A, get your mammogram and B, ask your loved ones to get their mammograms. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Begany, did you wanna speak about, um, this weekend's event? We were missing a guest, um, this evening and she couldn't make it. So I wanted to ask if you wanted to share about this weekend's event with the community Halloween party?
Well, you, you just spoiled that, but yes, the community Halloween party is coming up this weekend. It's gonna be here at JFK from 6 to 9 o'clock. There's gonna be lots of activities, costumes galore, candy for the kids. Uh, there's gonna be a kind of an element of a trunk or treat included this time around. Uh, so we hope we can see as many people, uh, from our community, our residents. Special shout out to the Reynoldsburg Community Association, uh, and their work to bring this event to our community in partnership with the city. And we're looking forward to it. Uh, there is no Ohio State game this weekend, so that's why we have plenty of events going on for those of us that'll be suffering from a little bit of football withdrawal. So can't wait to see everybody there, uh, on Saturday.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments this evening?
Thanks, um, Madam President. I want to, uh, provide a public shout out to Mr. Joe Sworson. Councilwoman Bryant and I had the opportunity to, uh, this past Friday, visit one of his classrooms, um, his history classrooms. And, you know, the students, I think, I believe 11th and 12th graders really have some really good questions about what's going on in the city. You will be very surprised. They had questions about the roads, sidewalks. So I wanted to just publicly say, you know, uh, Joe Sworson is doing a wonderful job with our young people. And, um, I encourage, you know, our, our council members, when they have an opportunity, to visit our schools.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank, um, Teacher Sworson for, um, inviting us to participate in the Homecoming Parade. We all had a good time participating. The weather was great and I just appreciate the invitation to participate as well. Do we have any other comments? Yes.
Thank you to our men and women. Thank you to our nurses or doctors and those who are working in logistic companies and those who work in retail, as well as those who work in the, um, restaurant business. Second, um, congratulations to the Homecoming King and Queen. That must be said and congratulations to the football team for, um, for their win last week. Gotta keep it moving, keep on racking up the wins because the season's almost over. It'll be almost playoff time, so just wanna put that out there.
Do we have any other comments? Next upcoming meetings is council, MBZBA, and Planning Commission meetings. Our next council meeting will be October 25th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And unless there's no other additional be, unless there's no additional bus, business, this meeting stands adjourned. The time is 8:07. Thank you, everyone.